Good evening. It is Monday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. This is the Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. She'll have a chance to take role.
I have mayor. Everyone is present and you have a forum.
We'll move on to public hearings this evening. We have a couple items. The first public hearing noticed up this evening is a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the property tax rates proposed to be set by the city of Carney, Missouri, a political subdivision. If you wish to speak for or against the proposed public hearing notice regarding the proposed tax rates, we'll have you come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Floor is open for public comment. Ryan, do we have anybody online? Doesn't look like it.
No, sir.
All right. Seeing no movement here, I will close the floor for public comment and input. Next item under public hearing is a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the application made by CLMM Land Company LLC to rezone sixteen point five three seven acres from R one low density residential district to C one neighborhood commercial district for the proposed Wilkerson Farm preliminary plat proposing five commercial lots. If you wish to speak for or against the proposed application made by CLMM Land Company to rezone sixteen point five three acres from R one low density residential to C one neighborhood commercial district. Have you moved forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record? Open the floor for public comment and input. See nobody move, I will close the floor on that item. And the last item for public hearings this evening is a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the proposed project at three oh three South Jefferson Street. Personally to chapter three fifty three redevelopment plan for the K three fifty three redevelopment area. Same thing if you wish to speak for or against the proposed project at three oh three South Jefferson Street, we'll have you move forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Open public comments. See nobody move, we will close. Next portion of the meeting is the open public comments during this portion of the meeting. We invite residents of Carney to step forward and directly address their Board of Aldermen. Each resident is requested to clearly state their name and address for the record and we'll have three minutes to present their statement. This session is specifically designed for residents who wish to express their views or concerns. It is not intended for dialogue, debate, or question and answer interactions with the board this evening. All statements made during this time will be formally recorded in the public record. We urge participants to keep their remarks respectful and focused on matters relevant to Carney. Your contributions are a vital part of our continuous efforts to enrich and improve Carney. And we thank you for adhering to these guidelines and helping us maintain the decorum of this process. The timer on the screen will advance from green to red. The 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 timer will be green for the first two minutes, yellow for the last minute and red when your time is up. So I know we have one resident here that wished to address her elected board. And once you come up to the podium, the timer will start and you have the floor.
Name and.
Amen address, please. Yes.
Jesse Jensen. I live at eleven oh four Noah Lane in Noah's Landing. I have spoken with the water company and they have been trying to be helpful. However, I want it to be heard from us and the residents of Noah's Landing that we are a brand new community. We're trying to establish our own properties there, our yards, and I have a real problem with the sewer. As much water as what we're putting out, we're being charged for sewer as well. And that water isn't going into the sewer system. It's going into our yards to try and start new sod. After speaking with half a dozen residents in the area, I just thought that this is the place for you guys to hear from us and to note that you know, it's it's costly when it's not all going in the sewer system. That's it.
All right. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. Is there anybody else that wish to address the board this evening? All right, we will move on to consent agenda this evening. Are there any items of discussion on the consent agenda or questions from the board? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. We'll move on to ordinances. The first ordinance this evening is a motion approving bill number forty one twenty twenty five presented by Stephanie Harris, the Finance Director in ordinance levying and fixing the rate of tax for municipal purposes and for the debt service fund for twenty twenty five. Stephanie?
Thank you. Good evening. I am submitting this ordinance, an annual ordinance always at this time of year. We received the final assessed valuations from Clay County a couple of weeks ago and calculated what our anticipated property tax assessment rate will be and general obligation bond rate will be an as many of you know, limited by the Hancock Amendment. So the calculation came out to be this year point four five two one for general revenue. General obligation bond stays at point oh five for a total levy value of point five oh two one. This does not take into account any of the senior tax senior tax relief program amounts that might be fixed based on recent legislation. So we do anticipate that property tax revenues will probably be a little bit less this year because of that new legislation, but we don't really have a good idea on how much less yet. It all depends on who applies for the program, et cetera. Other than that, I don't know if anybody else has any other question.
I just have one question. You may or may not know the answer to. So I just thought of it. You you're talking about the the senior tax credit. I I never really thought about how that would affect Hancock and how that could adversely affect the municipalities. Is there any way to get any information from the county that maybe where we could do some proformers or look or try to estimate for budget purposes on how that's going to affect our revenue?
There has been some information distributed from the county and from the initial legislation had a fiscal report that goes with legislation. The county did its best estimate, a preliminary estimate for how much property value they thought was related to senior property. And that was around forty five million. And the fiscal note said that they estimate about, and this was back, doesn't have a day on it. But back when they were working on the legislation, they thought Carney would see about seventy three hundred dollars less in property tax revenue growth related to that senior property. So that that just means, as I understand it, their property value gets fixed at the last assessed value rate. And so you don't get any of that new assessed value growth. And again, limited by Hancock Amendment, all growth is, but that's what the initial fiscal estimates were. Don't have any idea obviously on what reality is coming to be.
All right. Any other questions from the board on the proposed ordinance?
Stephanie, do you know what last year's levy was?
I can tell you, I think it was.
It's not somewhere. Point five two six four.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
So it's rolling back. All right, if there's no other questions or items of discussion, if we could read the proposed ordinance on their first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance levying and fixing the rate of tax for municipal purposes and for the debt service fund for twenty twenty five.
If approved on first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Pose? David, we'll need to see her face each time she goes, please. A second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance levying and fixing the rate of tax for municipal purposes and for this debt service fund for twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
You second in action?
Yep.
Right, we had Jerry, this first, Ashton second, pull the board, please.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number forty two twenty twenty five presented by Carolyn Yatzik, our Economic Development Director. An ordinance approving a redevelopment project for Veramore Bank under the K three fifty three redevelopment corporation redevelopment plan and approving an abatement agreement for the project. Carolyn?
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. As you'll recall, in October of twenty twenty four, the board approved the K three fifty three redevelopment plan under chapter three fifty three of Missouri State Statute to strengthen the original Carney area by encouraging reinvestment in its buildings, utilizing tax abatement in exchange for substantial building improvements. Before you tonight is an ordinance to approve the fourth redevelopment project and abatement agreement for Veramore Bank located at three oh three South Jefferson. This location was formerly Clay County Savings Bank. Veramore Bank has merged with Clay County Savings Bank and will now occupy this location. The project includes a full renovation. Inside, they'll be adding an ADA restroom, a new teller area, a personal banking space, a safe deposit area, along with new floor plan, or I'm sorry, along with new flooring and paint. Outside improvements include a new roof, a repaired exterior, redesigned entry and foyer, new windows, doors, plus a new parking lot, curbs, rock wall, and landscaping. The applicant's budget spreadsheet is what the tax impact analysis was based off of. It totals four hundred and sixty three thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars, and that is on page fifty of your packets. The tax impact analysis itself is on page fifty one, and it illustrates that the project qualifies as commercial level B, which provides a hundred percent tax abatement on new improvements for twelve years. And it estimates the total, that total evaded taxes will be a hundred and twenty eight thousand, two hundred and thirty four dollars. Again, that's estimated. The K three fifty three board reviewed the project on September second and recommended approval with condition that the expenses of three line items be removed. Those three line items are unforeseen costs, interior demolition, because due to the tight timeline, they had to begin work prior to board approval. And then also removing the ATM because it was not fixed. And the K three fifty three board resolution is also on page thirty of of your packet. Notices for tonight's public hearing and the assumed tax impact analysis for melted taxing jurisdictions pursuant to state statute. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. Matt Duffield, Veramore Banks, Chairman of the Board, was not able to make it this evening, but I am available to answer questions and Megan Miller is also joining us virtually this evening.
Great. Thank you for that report, Carolyn. Thanks for being here, Megan. Anybody on the board have any questions regarding the proposed ordinance? Alderman Lehman, I believe you represent us on that board.
I do.
Okay. If there are no questions, if we can read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a redevelopment project for Veramore Bank, successor and interest Clay County Savings and Loan and Clay County Savings Bank under the K three fifty three redevelopment corporation redevelopment plan and approving an abatement agreement for the project.
Approve on first reading.
Second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a redevelopment project for Veramore Bank, successor and interest Clay County Savings and Loan and Clay County Savings Bank under the K three fifty three redevelopment corporation redevelopment plan and approving an abatement agreement for the project.
Make a motion.
Approve. Second.
Hold the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading.
That's the ugliest building in town.
I purposely have not seen the plans. I've seen the picture on the beautiful sign out in front of the building, but I kind of stayed away from that, so.
It won't be, it's tall.
Yeah.
I hope so.
That's an ugly building. I hate it.
Uh, next item is motion approving bill number forty three twenty twenty five presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director. An ordinance approving a final plat of Cottonwood Creek Fifth Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way easements thereon. David?
Dear Valley submitted Cottonwood Creek Fifth Plat, final plat proposing twenty two single family lots on approximately seven and a half acres. Final plat's consistent with the preliminary plat and rezoning plan that was approved by the board. I think it was in June. The Florida construction happening and then moving forward. P and Z recommends approval of the final plat.
I was actually here for some of P and Z the other night, but Alderman Lehman, do you have anything else to add as our liaison?
No, this this we moved four four different items to the consent agenda basically because they were clerical in nature and this was one of them. So they were all, all four were approved unanimously.
Great. Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance? Think the applicant or his ears. But seeing no questions, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Cottonwood Creek Fifth Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easements thereon.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Cottonwood Creek Fifth Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easements thereon.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Hold the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Vote is unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number forty four twenty twenty five presented by David Pavlich and Community Development. An ordinance reapproving a final plat of Noah's Landing Second Plat and subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easements thereon. David?
Yeah, the Noah's Landing Second Plat, final plat proposes thirty nine lots on approximately twelve acres. It was approved last year in September. All the infrastructure has been installed, but they could not get the plat recorded within a year, so they've still got some things to do, so we're seeking reapproval of the final plat.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance reapproving a final plat of Noah's Landing Second Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easements thereon.
You to approve on first read. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance reapproving a final plat of Noah's Landing Second Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easements thereon.
Motion to approve.
Second. Hold the board, please.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous and ordinance is approved on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number forty five twenty twenty five presented by David Pavlich. An ordinance amending chapter four hundred of the municipal code, the comprehensive zoning regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately sixteen point five three seven acres at the northeast corner of Nation Road and West nineteenth Street to C one neighborhood commercial district as requested by CLMM Land Company LLC for Wilkerson Farm. David?
Yeah, CLMM Land Company is represented by Craig Porter, who's in the audience tonight. Was rezone about sixteen and a half acres at the northeast corner of Nation Road and West nineteenth Street from R one, single family residential to C one neighborhood commercial district. It's zoned R one because there was an old subdivision flat years ago that was approved called Highland Meadows, probably around two thousand or two thousand two. Now, no construction ever happened since then. We have a new interchange at nineteenth street. We've updated our comprehensive plan and future land use map, which shows commercial and industrial development in this area. So the rezoning would be compliant or assistant with our future land use map and the comprehensive plan. Planning and zoning recommends approval of the rezoning.
Thank you. Alderman Lehman, do you have anything to add?
This was the one item that was not on consent agenda. It was presented. I think it's a great location. I believe it's where the fire station two is going to go in one of those lots, so it will help the people on the west side have better fire protection. So I think this is a great thing and that's why P and Z approved six oh, so.
Any other questions from the board? If we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter four hundred of the municipal code, the comprehensive zoning regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately sixteen point five three seven acres at the northeast corner of Nation Road and West nineteenth Street to C one neighborhood commercial district as requested by CLMM Land Company LLC for Wilkerson Farm.
You to approve on first reading.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter four hundred of the municipal code, the comprehensive zoning regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately sixteen point five three seven acres at the northeast corner of Nation Road and West nineteenth Street to C one neighborhood commercial district as requested by CLMM Land Company LLC for Wilkerson Farm.
Make a motion to approve on second reading.
I'll second.
Hold the board, please.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous and ordinance is approved. Next item is a motion approving bill number forty six twenty twenty five presented by our police, our chief of police, Mark Thomas, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with the Missouri Department of Transportation, Highway Safety and Traffic Division for federal grant funding for hazardous moving violation enforcement. Chief Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. This grant is a recurring grant that we do each year. It's going to allow us to have a grant for fourteen thousand and thirty eight dollars from the Department of Transportation. It's going to be used for funds for training and equipment and hazardous moving violation operations.
Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, if we can read first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for federal grant funds for hazardous moving violation enforcement.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with the Missouri Department of Transportation Highway Safety and Traffic Division for federal grant funds for hazardous moving violation enforcement.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hold the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous and ordinance is approved. Next item is a motion approving bill number forty seven twenty twenty five presented by David Pavlich and ordinance approving a final plat of Westwood North First Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easements thereon. David?
Yeah, this subdivision final plat was submitted by Parkway Holdings LLC to propose eighty single family lots on about thirty acres, located adjacent to the north side of existing Westwood subdivision. This final plat also is consistent with the approved preliminary plat that was updated last year. Look forward to construction also beginning on on that to provide additional lots for single family development.
Alderman Lehman, do you have anything to add to that report?
This was one of them that was moved to consult agenda for administrative reasons and it passed six oh. Was there any discussion about when that destruction may start or is he just putting this out there and we're gonna have to redo it down the road too?
Lots of C construction, you know, yeah, by next year. Yeah. Same with, same with Cottonwood Creek.
Yeah.
All right, seeing no other questions, if we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Westwood North First Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easements thereon.
If you approve on first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Westwood North First Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right of way and easements thereon.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Hold the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous and ordinance is approved. Last ordinance this evening is a motion approving bill number forty eight twenty twenty five presented by Shelley Daniel, our Public Works Director, and ordinance approving the water purchase agreement with the city of Kansas City, Missouri. Shelley?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance authorizes the Public Works Director to return to a new twenty five year water purchase agreement at the city of Kansas City, Missouri. The new agreement replaces the original one established on July thirteen thousand. This new agreement reflects our increased water storage capacity resulting from the replacement of the water tower on Watson Drive. And it also includes a provision for Kansas City to supply us an increased water volume outlined in our water master plan. Agreement acknowledges that future pipeline infrastructure may need to be upgraded to accommodate this increased volume at our expense. I'd recommend approval.
Thank you for that report. Any questions on the report? Or the proposed agreement? Seeing none, if we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the water purchase agreement with the city of Kansas City, Missouri.
You to approve on the first reading. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the water purchase agreement with the city of Kansas City, Missouri.
Make a motion. To approve.
So we, the first from Alderman King and a second from Alderman Spencer. Pull the board, please.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Vote is unanimous and the ordinance is approved. We have no resolution this evening. We have one item, our August monthly financial report under items for review and presentation. Stephanie?
Okay, this is your report for the month of August, in the August thirty first, twenty twenty five, forty two percent through the fiscal year. Pretty much the same comments that I have in. There's nothing that is really stands out. Probably the biggest thing that stands out is that we are doing way better on our interest and investment income than we had budgeted. And that is, that is, kind of stands out in every fund. Again, the only things that are looked far under are anticipated to be at that place this time of year. And the things that might look way over are usually or are typically the annual expenses that have already been incurred or annual like contracts that have been paid for, so that it's a bit. expenses that have already been incurred or annual like contracts that have been paid for, so that it's a bit of a timing difference. I did not see anything else that is concerning. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions on the financial report? Uh, August monthly report? All right, we'll move on to Mayor's Communications. Only item I have this evening is Ms. Jessie, I'm sorry, I'm gonna put your last name. Jitsman, thank you so much once again for being here this evening and taking the time to address uh your board. Um, I'll reach out to you. Um, I have some some thoughts. I'm sure staff's already shared some ideas with you. Um, but um on the sign-up form, um, I'll I'll get your contact information. I'll reach out to you. I'd love to have a conversation with you. So thank you for being here this evening. That concludes my mayor's communications, and we'll move on to city administrators' report.
The only things I have are some housekeeping slash announcements. Our next board meeting will be on Monday, October sixth. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event is going to be held at Mac Porter Park from eight AM to noon on Saturday, October fourth. And um also Curbside Bulky Pickup is going to be the week of October sixth on your regular trash day.
Think the force is gonna be a busy, well, the, we're not hosting the hazardous household waste system.
We are.
So it's gonna, it's gonna be a busy day in Carney.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, uh, we'll move on to Alderman Discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I am pleased to announce that I am back on the Missouri Municipal League Board of Directors.
Congratulations.
I was voted in um out of six candidates.
Well, uh, thank you, Jerry, for being willing to continue to serve, let alone at at that level. So thank you for that, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderman King?
I don't have anything.
Alderman Lehman?
I have nothing.
Alderman Holt?
Yeah, I would just wanna say some kudos to uh our police chief. Um, we've been getting I was at a football party yesterday, and we had several of the people they know I'm an Alderman, they were talking, and they were bragging on you guys. They love your reports that you're giving. They really liked the one where the uh gal had stole the car, gave you all the false staves, all that. They loved that update that you had presented. Uh, they said they don't have to watch cops on TV. Uh, so. So uh, thank you for letting our our people know, and they're appreciating what you guys are doing. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much.
So I have.
All right, we do have an executive session noticed up this evening, a closed session per RSMO six ten oh two one uh subsection one for legal actions or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. RSMO six ten oh two one subsection two, leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body with public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore, and RSMO six ten oh two one subsection twelve to discuss matters pertaining to negotiated contracts. Our meeting will be adjourned from the closed session, so this does conclude our open public uh portion of the meeting. If we can consider a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
I'll second.
Hold the board, please?
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman King?
Aye.
That concludes our open public portion of the meeting. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for being here.